Okay, good morning. Welcome to our school board meeting for Pasco County Schools Tuesday, August 6, 2019. Please turn off your cell phones. And our vision statement is that all students, all of our students, achieve success in college, career, and life. I have the thought for the day, which is, "Great leaders know that the total knowledge of those around them is vastly greater than everything they know alone." That's by Simon Sinek. So please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As for roll call, make note, everyone is here today. I would like to ask for a moment of silence and that you could please reflect upon the victims in the El Paso, Texas and Dayton, Ohio shootings. Minutes of the regular meeting of July 30, 2019, and workshop of July 30, 2019 are up for approval. I need a motion to approve.
Move to approve. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And we have no public hearings today and no special presentations. So time for public comment on the, any agenda topics. That would be green cards, and I see none. So that's correct, I'm assuming. Okay, it's time for Don Peace of United School Employees of Pasco to come up. Good morning, Don.
Good morning. Superintendent Browning, Attorney Alfonso, Chair Crumley, honorable board members and district staff. A very brief report today. Seems like I was just here, like a week ago. First, I'd like to say thanks to Leah Mitchell and Samantha Del Valle for meeting with USEP staff to talk about our concerns with the grading practices. We agreed to keep communicating on how to move forward and will attempt to add more voices to the design team so that we have better communication. They were agreeable to have conversation with senior district staff, and I just had some conversation and a text this morning with some positive comments that I think, and I'm hopeful that we'll be able to get through this. I brought this up about two months ago with the intent on trying to get clarity and a resolution so that we could start the year all on the same page. Hopefully, we can get there by the end of the week because we'd like to release some of the angst that's being directed at us from many of the teachers across the district. I would also like to thank Joanne Glenn for allowing Jim Ciedella and myself to speak to the entire e-school faculty yesterday. That's the first time that we've seen all of them together in quite a while. We were able to give updates on bargaining and go over the teacher evaluation language with them. This is a special population to do what they do, and they should be recognized for their hard work and dedication to their students. I had 195 students one year, and the difference between me and the, the e-school people is I could let them go home at the end of the day, and they still got to deal with these people all hours of the day and night to try to tackle their assignments and grading and all the requirements that go with it. So it takes a special people to do that, and I just wanted to commend them for the job that they do and the hard work that they put out for our students. Instructional negotiating teams resume talks on Thursday. SRP coming back to the table next week. We're hoping to work through some language concerns from mediation to align with statute. And finally, as we rev up this week with the anticipation of meeting our students on Monday, it's our hope that we all have a prosperous school year. So, thank you.
Board member committee reports. We start with Mrs. Harding.
I had none.
It's okay.
None for me.
We have value adjustment this Friday.
None for me.
None for me either. It's summer, but that'll be changing soon. Superintendent Browning.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chairman, members, just a couple of things. As you all are aware, teachers returned yesterday, and I'm excited about getting them back and getting back in the groove of another great school year. As you are also aware, students return next Monday, the 12th. We will be ready for them. This week, I'm making the rounds to our three schools that are on the state watch list. Mrs. Hilton and I joined the Hudson Elementary School faculty and staff yesterday, had a good conversation with them. I'll be getting to Roddy B. Cox Elementary and 5A High Schools on Friday and talking to their faculties and staff as well. Also, I just want to give you a reminder that this school year is a planning year for Northwest Elementary School, Hudson Middle, Hudson High School, for the Cambridge program. And then also, it's a planning year for the Gulf Middle School faculty and staff as they start wrapping their arms around the middle year's IB program for full implementation next school year. And while that's going on, we're also starting to have more conversations about what the next phase of rollout looks like, not just in West Pasco, but district-wide. We are going to be scheduling the workshop that you requested last Tuesday, and we'll be getting that scheduled as soon as we are prepared to come back and give you some specifics about what that looks like. Other than that, as we go through the year, if you have questions when you're out in schools, if you have questions you can't get answers on, I'm sure principals are well-equipped to address any concerns or issues you have, but if you see things, if you see something, say something. Let me know because I want to make sure that you are getting the answers that you need so you can make good decisions for our students. That's all I have. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Gad, please.
We should use that.
Just a quick humorous aside, I was talking with my granddaughter Chloe yesterday because she's at the beach with her nana and her mother and her brother Ty. And she was talking to me from the beach there under one of those, like, tailgate tents, and we're having actually a pretty lengthy conversation. And I said, "Well, Chloe, it's, this is your last gasp." I said, "You're going to be back to the grind, and school's going to start in a few days." And I said "ha ha" to her, and she went, "Papa." She goes, "I can't wait to get back to school. I love school." And first of all, it kind of brought tears to my eyes when I heard her say that, but secondly, I think it's a testament to the quality of our schools and the quality of the teachers, the teacher, that she's been goofing off all summer long, having nothing but incredible fun, and she is ecstatic about getting back to school. So that tells you the impact at least one school is having on some of our kids, and she attends Sanders. So I hope all kids feel that way. Thanks. That's all I had.
Mr. Shibley?
There was an addition to item 10.1 that has been uploaded into Board Docs. Also, just wanted to update the board that HR has been working fast and furious with school administrators to fill those last-minute vacancies. I plan to bring a report to the next board meeting to kind of let you know where we stand. Obviously, it was HR's goal, as well as the school's goal, to have fewer vacancies this year than we did last, and they're still working towards that objective. And finally, we did have stuff to the bus this past weekend. They collected supplies on Saturday and actually had staff sorting for schools yesterday morning. I just wanted to thank the district staff that was involved with that, Transportation, Distribution Services, as well as all the United Way volunteers who helped put that together. I think total, we had well over 100 people working on that, whether it was collecting supplies or helping to sort yesterday. So it was a good thing to see. Thank you.
Mrs. Coon?
Can I interrupt? Mr. Shibley, when you do that report of vacancies, would you break out the high needs, the science and math stuff?
We can do by critical shortage areas. Sure. Absolutely.
That's a good idea. Thanks. Mrs. Coon?
Good morning. We welcome back 800 food service employees tomorrow over bridge, so Superintendent Browning will be there, as will I, and they've done a really nice job this summer with a difficult task of getting them back for school with being down their leader who is doing well in sensor regards.
Mrs. Swenson? Okay. To the side. Mrs. Hilton?
Nothing for me?
Nope. Dr. I?
Just want to say we have lots of great things happening at our schools right now. Staff are excited, good kickoffs. We have secondary orientation today. We'll have elementary orientation later this week, and it's going to be an awesome school year.
Thanks.
I would just add to Monica in terms of I visited some schools yesterday, and the norm on a Monday first day is everybody comes into the, into the, you know, media center or whatever, but there was just a lot of positive energy in those schools as they start to sort of welcome each other back, the teachers and the staff, and get excited about this coming year. So it was fun to see the energy.
Thank you. Thanks. And we have no expulsion recommendations. Yay. Okay, on to the consent agenda, which includes an addition to 10.1. Any board member have an item to pull or for discussion or anything?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I've got the right one.
Okay.
It is 9.3.
You want to pull?
Yeah.
Okay. So Mrs. Bowden wants to pull item 9.3. Okay, so I would need a motion?
I move approval of the consent agenda with the addition of Addendum 10.1 that was added and not including 9.3.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that motion was made by Board Member Altman and seconded by Board Member Armstrong. Okay?
Oh, 9.3. I just wanted to ask Jeff something because I had read, you already know what I'm going to ask, but I had read that the board president's in Palm Beach Gardens, so I was wondering who they are going to have locally, so when we get calls from families who we can direct them to, because it's, it's difficult, and I get those calls about charter schools, and there's nobody to, do they have anyone local on their board?
Good morning, Madam Chair, School Board Members, Superintendent Browning, Attorney Alfonso. So RISE Charter School does not currently have a local governing board, but they have a founding governing board, and their intent is to be an all-local board. That was expressed to me by their board chair.
That's good to hear. Do they have a timeline for that?
So as soon as the contract is approved, they would go into posting for those applicants and try to fill those positions prior to the start of school, is my understanding.
Okay. That's good to hear. Thank you.
And since you're up asking, answering questions, do all three of these intend on opening up next year, as far as you know?
So two of the charter schools intend on opening up. That would be RISE Charter School in 2021 school year, and also Innovation Preparatory Academy, the first one, they intend to open the 2021 school year. However, they have, according to the statute, up to three years to defer their opening.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question, and I didn't ask you this sooner, Madam Chair, before I may?
Of course.
Mr. Yovan?
Yes.
Don't leave so soon.
Does, does RISE Charter School or Charter Academy, have they indicated where they're opening?
So RISE Charter School wants to locate in the southeast corner of Winfield's Development and State Road 56, so the Wesley Chapel area.
But do they have a physical location as of yet?
So there's 13-acre plot there, yes, sir. They have secured for that location, that they have earmarked.
So, so they don't have a building, and they plan to open a year from now?
Yes, sir.
No, 2021?
2021 school, yes, sir.
Which is next fall. Next fall.
August of 2020.
Mr. Williams might be able to address that.
2021 is next August.
Right.
August 2020 is when they want to open.
Right, so they're going to build a building in a year?
That's, that's their intent, but we'll see.
For 1,400 kids.
They don't have to have them. We do, so.
Okay, that's all.
Well, they don't, yeah, they don't have the
They don't have the requirements that we do.
Requirements. They can throw those babies up. I'm sorry. I think, Mr. Williams?
I want to stay around, but, I'm sorry. I just wanted to maybe add a little bit of, I don't know if it's light, but the Winfield's developer did meet with me, and so I don't know, I'm assuming that that's the same. So we have a elementary site in Winfield's, and I know they are looking to try to use that site.
Oh, wait, I'm confused.
Our elementary?
We have an elementary site, the district?
We do not own it yet, but it's promised to us and the Winfield's developer. However, they have spoken to me about wanting to use that site, but that would require your approval. That's, so I just wanted to bring that out, bear that out, that those are discussions that are ongoing, so I'm not sure if they have a different site or
Is a backup?
Or if they're banking on that site, and so there's still some ambiguity or, you know, it's not clear what site they would be using as far as I'm concerned.
So either way, they have not began construction on a building to try to open next year.
They, right, they have not yet.
But if they were to use our site, it would be in lieu of us using it.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Which would, again, require, there's a whole, there would be a process involved with that. They have had an initial conversation, but again, they would have to come to you, and that would have to be approved by you. And there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of conditions that would have to go along with that.
Sure.
One of which would even implicate how stringent the regulations are about the construction of facilities. That would just be in the realm of possibilities of that discussion, so.
And also, what would happen if they should
Close. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. So, move to approve, item?
9.3.
9.3.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now we, is that it? We need to do any more? That concludes our consent.
That's consent, so now you're on to 15.1.
Okay. So make sure I didn't jump ahead like I usually do. Okay, miscellaneous action items, District School Board Policies Update, 8407, for final approval. I need a motion to approve.
Move approval.
Second?
All in favor?
I want to discuss.
Okay.
Please.
Yes.
I had, if you remember last meeting, I had asked that, that be delayed, and I had talked to Mr. Shibley and about the language that had been provided by Niola because there were two options that were provided. We were presented one, and after attending the State School Board Association meeting, talking to some of the people, listening to the webinar on the Parkland Commission, and then reading the stuff from this past week, and unfortunately, I think that this board should at least consider and have a discussion about the option of personnel other than classroom teachers who have indicated that they are potentially willing to be trained. And I've certainly been supportive of the position so, so far, but I will tell you that listening to the school board member from Citrus County that sat on the commission and listened to all this stuff and how he had changed his opinion, and then if you read the information, most of these events are over in three to four minutes. This past weekend, one of those events was, the gunman was taken down in 35 seconds and still managed to take nine people down, and so I just think it bears a discussion of, are we going to shut the door completely on employees who are willing to go through the extensive training, all the background checks, certification, the recertification, and, and maintain that we're only going to allow our guardians and SROs? And so I would just submit to you that the additional language that Niola provided that was another option was a district employee or personnel as defined under Section 1002 who volunteers to serve as a school guardian in addition to their official job duties. So just know, you, you may have had none come to you, but I have had two or three of our administrators, principals, that have asked about that. And so I'm bringing it up today for discussion because there is additional language that's an option, and I personally think somewhere between those two is where we should be. And just throw that out today before we vote based on additional information that, that I've read that I think we should consider.
Yes, Mrs. Armstrong.
All right. I also attended the, the session at the FSBA about the, the committee and their report. Of course, it was an abbreviated report, but they did do the timeline, and it was definitely, you know, gave a compelling argument to needing a faster response. But I still have a lot of questions and concerns about having someone on campus carrying concealed. I, I just see a lot of problems, and I haven't ever gotten questions to, answers to the questions I have regarding how that would actually work. Like, all right, that person that is supposedly not known to anybody but certain people, all of a sudden pulls out a gun and starts running around campus, how do people know that he's the good guy or the bad guy? How does the first responders know he's the good guy, the bad guy? You know, someone that has been working closely with the students, even if he's not a classroom teacher, all of a sudden he's required to pull a gun and shoot a student that he knows? How, you know, what, how mentally is he going to be capable of doing that? So there's just all these questions that I would want answered before we open this. The other thing is, our policy that we have now can be addressed at any time. We can make the change. So once we got answers to these questions and maybe more of us felt comfortable with it, maybe it's something that we could address then, but I don't think we've vetted out that option and how, what that option would look like in order for me to feel comfortable with changing the policy at this time when I know we can change it at any time in the future if we see that need.
Did you have a comment, Mrs. Harding? That's okay. You go first, if you want, or Mrs. Bowden. I hear the, she wants to say something too. So one of you.
Well, I'm trying to gather my thoughts.
Okay.
Well, I, I agree with both of you, really. I mean, you both make good points, and I, too, attended that session at FSBA, and it did make me think a little more about it, but my initial concerns are still very similar to Mrs. Armstrong, and I worry about this, the weapon getting in the hands of a student, too. And we've had, you know, there are altercations where an administrator, we know, gets involved trying to break up students, and I would just fear that there would be more likely that we'd have an accidental shooting than, than someone would actually end up using it to protect our students. However, that was pretty compelling. It was, that presentation, but at this time, we wouldn't even be prepared, I don't think, to go any further with that. So for now, I would say, leave it the way we have it, but we can always revisit it. We revisit this twice a year, and we could revisit it at any time sooner if we wanted to.
Is there any way that we could get some of those questions answered?
Just real quick, I want to just throw in two. I feel like I have a lot more questions than before I could even, and although, Mr. Altman, you do bring up good points, and I was not able to attend what you said you attended and, and heard, and I didn't, I wasn't in that breakout session at the FSBA with Mrs. Armstrong, but I'm leaning more towards, I have a lot of questions before I could feel comfortable with anything like that, and so for the time being, I'm comfortable with where I've always, where my position has always been, which is to leave it the way it's in the policy now.
Can I just make, add to my, so I, I agree, like, I see your point, Mr. Altman, and I see Mrs. Armstrong's point, but I, I feel the same way, like, I want, I have a lot of questions, and I'd like to get those questions answered before we were to change anything.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, now.
So I kind of jumped in front of the superintendent. I know he wants to respond. I, just one point I thought is appropriate to make, and more for anything else, just for the board, because, so this is a weird area, because when the board starts considering, these are great questions and appropriate questions, the mechanism to get some of these questions answered most appropriately would probably be in that sort of closed session where they, where you talk about the specifics of sites and the specific safety plans for each site. So if you want to get into the specific, the weeds, as it were, of, of those details that might be appropriate for a closed session with the sheriff and that kind of circumstance, just so you can feel comfortable, because other than that, public discussion about it would reveal the substance of our safety plan, which is confidential. One last thing to say, the way the policy is right now, certainly, it specifically authorizes the use of the guardians that we had come up with. It does not exclude, but you're right, I think the, an amendment to the policy would be necessary if the board were going to expand it to say, as Mr. Altman suggested, at least that concept of somebody else, it would have to be addressed by policy, which could be, would, would have to go through the whole public, you know, adoption policy, which would be 28 days' hearing. So it's not immediate that the board could change its mind, but it certainly could.
And I'm fine with moving ahead and doing the closed session, and if the board at that point in time felt that it was appropriate, that we would ask staff to maybe question employees. My guess is, it's going to be a really small number that may, but some have asked, and some that I would feel extremely confident in, and I don't know how many more there are. So I'm, I'm comfortable with moving ahead like we are, and at some point in time, when school gets settled back down and they can arrange it, that we can do a closed session with the sheriff's staff, where we can have those specific discussions and answer the questions appropriately, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Has anybody else had anyone ask? Because I haven't, okay, I haven't.
Yeah, I've had, I've had two.
I think it would be prudent to have that closed session, just so we understand all the options better. You know, that was certainly something that I think we should do, and I also would like to, to know how other districts that have chosen that option, how they are implementing it. And I believe only know of a couple of small counties that really don't have other options available to them, have, or no option that makes sense, have utilized it, so I would love to see how they handle it. But I think it would benefit to make sure that we are fully informed.
And, and the sheriff's office people that I was supposed to have some of the answers, but I don't want to discuss those.
Right.
Ideally, we would have more, if funding was not an issue, ideally, we would have more sheriff's staff.
Right, we could.
And more guardians.
Well, I, I
It's not just funding.
The trained professionals.
Yes, and it's also that there's not enough, even if we did have the money, there aren't enough.
Yeah, I, I still think someone in a uniform with a visible gun is, is a very strong deterrent, and also it's something that the students and parents can visually see that gives them peace of mind more than, oh, is, is there somebody at our school, or who is it, or do I trust that person? I think it just really makes, I think we, no matter what we do, we still need to have that visible presence.
Absolutely, I agree.
Yeah. Okay, so we already had a motion.
Just, just as an aside, we have in October a closed session to discuss the safety assessment. So that would certainly be, and, you know, it's October, it's a little ways off, but that would be an opportunity for you to have more in-depth discussion about this issue. I think it's an important issue. I've had at least one administrator approach me about carrying a weapon, but, Ms. Armstrong, to answer some of your questions, in terms of how it would be carried, that would be up to us. I mean, in other words, our current guards carry weapons, and they have a specific holster, a Level 3 holster and so forth, that is actually hard to get into.
a Level III holster and so forth, that is actually hard to get into. But those are the decisions that I concur with Mr. Alfonso that should be talked about because there are different strategic approaches to how people carry guns and what that might mean. So my preference would be that we waited until October and had that discussion, because I think you might find the pros and cons of that discussion kind of fascinating, because we've had it behind the scenes already, so.
I'm perfectly comfortable with that.
Is that something that we should invite, like, the sheriff's office?
Definitely.
Because I'm like, we're partnering with them, so I want to make sure that...
They're actually doing the presentation for that.
Okay, perfect.
We already had a motion, right? Yeah, so we just, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion approved. And that was, what, was that a number?
15.1.
Okay, 15.1. Okay, very good. So on to individual, individual board member reports. Mrs. Harding?
Okay. I just wanted to give a quick, like, shout-out to, like, the maintenance staff that has been working so hard over the summer to make sure that our schools are ready for our students. I've been able to go to a couple, and they just look so beautiful. I'm really, I'm really proud. And I also wanted to give a shout-out to all our teachers and staff that have gone back to work. I hope everyone had had a chance to relax and spend time with their families. I know that it can be a really bittersweet feeling coming back after a wonderful break, so I just wanted to really remind them that the school that they work at, they're there for a reason, and they get to make a difference every day in the lives of our students, and I'm cheering them on, and I'm here for them, and I'm so thankful for the amazing work that they do every day. I also got to attend the final day of Together We Learn at JW Mitchell High School. I attended a course all about the advanced phonics instruction. That was really neat, and I just really, really, really love that our district provided these professional development courses for our teachers and staff. I also, on Friday, got invited by, invited by the Trinity Rotary to shop with some of our students who live at Metropolitan Ministries, and I got to shop with a student who'll be going to kindergarten this year, so it was really fun to, like, help set her up for success, and we got all these really pretty little first-day-of-school dresses, so I just really wanted to thank the Trinity Rotary for setting them up for success. We really, really do have a wonderful community around us, so.
All right. I volunteered at Stuff the Bus. I was at the Walmart at Trinity and actually ended up working with a teacher from Gulf Middle School, so not only did we have district staff out there volunteering, we also had teachers out there volunteering. So it was very nice seeing the response from some of the people acknowledging how hard our teachers work and how much they really deserve their help, so we got not only supplies, but also quite a few monetary contributions, so they could fill in the gaps. And then I also went by Together We Learn at Mitchell High School. I got a chance to talk to some of the new teachers come in that were very excited, and of course thanked them profusely for choosing Pasco County. Popped into several of the classes, and I was just so pleased at the enthusiasm of the instructor, the quality of the information that was coming out, and the response that the teachers were very receptive to what they were hearing. So I think it went extremely well. So I know teachers I've talked to, you know, the fall, going back, seeing your class roster the first time, you're full of hope for a great year, so I hope that feeling of greatness continues the whole year for them, because they do do an amazing job for our students.
Nancy.
I just want to refer to Agenda Items 9.5 to 9.12 and thank Mrs. Musclewhite and the SSPS staff for applying for those numerous entitlement grants. I'm pleased to see us taking advantage of these opportunities for our students and families. I also wanted to thank, again, the many community organizations that are providing our students and teachers with supplies and backpacks. I, too, volunteered at Stuff the Bus, and Mrs. Fesmire was there as well on Saturday, so I wanted to thank the United Way and Trinity and Hudson Walmarts for participating. I attended the Forte Fest fundraiser, Philando Lakes High School Marching Band, because, again, they're going to be performing in DC for Memorial Day, and it was a pretty good turnout, but it was raining, so it did put a little damp on it, but they did still perform in the rain, so I got to see that, and they're doing, they did a great job. I also wanted to just ask the superintendents to please consider, when you meet with the principals, inviting us or asking the principals to always be open to inviting us to welcome teachers back if they ever want to. I don't know, some people don't think of it. Seems like the same administrators reach out to us a lot about things going on, and some never do, so I just wanted to put it out there that, you know, we're open to being invited. I think I could, you know, speak for all of us, if it fits in our schedule, that we'd like to welcome people back. I also wanted to thank the staff for working with the union and taking into consideration all of our concerns regarding the Secondary Grading Practices document. And then I wanted to wish all our teachers, leaders, and support staff a great year. I've enjoyed reading all the social media posts and seeing the excitement being generated. It looks like all the leaders are focusing on establishing positive cultures, which will definitely make a good impact on our students. I'm really confident that this is going to be a great year. It's going to be the best one yet. And last, I just have one quick question for Ms. Coon, which I think I know the answer, but is Transportation doing the call center again the first week?
Yes, we are. It'll be Monday through Wednesday, right here in the portable 8A, and then it transfers over to Transportation at Ritchie Elementary the rest of the week.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. I attended a retreat at Seven Springs Country Club that the new principal of Gulf High School, Jeff Morgenstein, put on for his teachers, and it was really well-attended, and they did a great job getting everybody started. It was, I stayed as long as I could, and I learned a lot of stuff, and he did, is doing, off to a great start at Gulf High. Then I have a little surprise. I had received a call from US CENTCOM, Central Command at MacDill. The FCPOA, which is First Class Petty Officers Association, they have a gift of $1,000 for, they chose two of our Title I schools, Hudson Elementary and Moon Lake Elementary, and they want to give to us for back-to-school supplies for the kiddos, so we can set that up, Dr. Skanga, but I thought that was amazing that the military is giving to our students. Get a little choked up here. And MacDill, which is obviously Hillsboro, so that was my surprise. Thank you. Anyway.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have one informational item that I wanted to, I asked the superintendent to just include in today, and that is, you have copies on your desk of some correspondence regarding Plato Academy, and to make a really long story short, this is not an action item, this is an update to the board, nothing more. District staff was made aware of a dispute concern about unpaid rent from the landlord to Plato. We were copied by that correspondence. We have requested information from Plato to find out where they are with this, because obviously it impacts our students. So we are, I had requested staff to reach out and say, hey, if you can give us an update by the meeting, I'd be happy to pass that along. To the best of my knowledge, Mr. Gad signed a letter last week. We did not receive a response, but I intend to follow up with counsel for Plato and find out what else is going on. The point, again, is just to give the board information, because obviously there's a dispute about rent, and if it ends up in litigation or whatever else, if it has any impact on that school, then the district needs to know, and the board should be aware of it.
Thank you.
So that's all I have.
Thank you.
We've got some pink cards in the meanwhile, so.
Yes. Did you have anything else to say, Superintendent, from before?
No, ma'am, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. All right, public comments on non-Agenda items. I have a few...